We will now call the May 4th meeting of the Common Council of Oak Creek to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorik.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Tillman.
Here.
Gale.
Here.
Kuzakowski.
Here.
And everybody, please rise for the pledge.
Yeah, can you just start us off?
Certainly. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so everybody, please take a look at the minutes of 4/20/21. You are satisfied, there's no deletions, errors, or discussion, we'll accept the motion.
Kurkowski, make a motion to approve the minutes of April 20th, 2021.
Kurkowski, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Bostens.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Item four is recognition for Jennifer Lattis for celebrations. Catherine, if you'd please read that in the record.
Certainly. Council proclamation number 2103 to Jennifer Lattis for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Whereas Jennifer Lattis was appointed to the celebrations commission on December 2018 and served for one year and eight months. And whereas Jennifer Lattis resigned from the celebrations commission effective August 2020. And whereas Jennifer Lattis helped to organize and participate in the yearly summer solstice, the Fourth of July celebration, the yearly Halloween trick-or-treat event, the giving tree events, and the yearly Christmas tree lighting celebration. And whereas Jennifer Lattis has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Jennifer Lattis for her dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Jennifer Lattis, introduced and adopted this fourth day of May 2021.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Anybody? Anybody know Jennifer? No. I'd like to thank Jennifer, I did work some events with her. And again, thank you for your time, your talent, and your service to the city of Oak Creek. Greatly appreciated. With that, we can get a vote on that.
Bill, move to approve council proclamation number 21-03 to Jennifer Lattis for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission.
Kurkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Item five is also a consideration of the proclamation for Lisa Marshall for dedicated service to the celebrations commission in the city of Oak Creek. Catherine.
Certainly. Council proclamation number 2104 to Lisa Marshall for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Whereas Lisa Marshall was appointed to the celebrations commission in July 2018 and served for two years and eight months. And whereas Lisa Marshall resigned from the celebrations commission in March 2021. And whereas Lisa Marshall helped to organize the yearly Easter egg hunt and joyfully participated in the yearly summer solstice, Fourth of July celebration, Halloween trick-or-treat event, the giving tree events, and the yearly Christmas tree lighting celebration. And whereas Lisa Marshall has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Lisa Marshall for her dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Be it further resolved that the proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Lisa Marshall, introduced and adopted this fourth day of May 2021.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Anybody for Lisa?
Alderman Dukenyak, third district. I've worked with Lisa on a few things. And basically, we'd just like to say thank you to Lisa for her service to our community and wish her the very best in her future endeavors. Thank you, Lisa.
I'd like to add, thank you on behalf of the city and myself for all your hard work that you did on various events and your time on celebrations. Greatly appreciate it. Motion, please.
Dukenyak, move to approve council proclamation number 21-04 to Lisa Marshall for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission.
Kurkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item six is also consideration of proclamation for Carolyn Buckowitz for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Catherine, if you would.
Certainly. Council proclamation 2105 to Carolyn Bekovich for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Whereas Carolyn Bekovich was appointed to the celebrations commission in May 2010 and served for 10 years. And whereas Carolyn Bekovich resigned from the celebrations commission in April 2021. And whereas in addition to serving as chair for the commission, Carolyn Bekovich helped successfully organize countless holiday events in the city for all to enjoy. And whereas Carolyn Bekovich was instrumental in organizing the yearly Easter egg hunt, the summer solstice, the Fourth of July celebration, the city's Halloween trick-or-treat event, various giving tree events, and the yearly Christmas tree lighting celebration. And whereas Carolyn Bekovich has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Carolyn Bekovich for her dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Be it further resolved that the proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Carolyn Bekovich, introduced and adopted this fourth day of May 2021.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Anyone on Carolyn?
Alderman Dukenyak, third district, once again. I have the pleasure of working with Carolyn. Looking at the dates here on the proclamation, that would have been 2010 through 2016. Carolyn was part of city celebrations. I was the executive director at the community center. And with her help, we put on what was called the summer concert series. So I want to thank Carolyn for helping fill our community with the wonderful sounds of music. And again, thank her for her service and wish her also the best in future endeavors.
I was just going to mention the same types of things. So thank you again, Carolyn, for all the leadership that you had at the commissions and enjoy retirement.
Okay.
Alderman Tillman, I've known Carolyn for quite a few years. And the words that she organized countless holiday events is appropriate because there's too many to list. She's been involved over and above the call of duty. And a personal thank you for me to Carolyn for her service.
Okay. On behalf of the city and myself, I would like to thank Carolyn Buckowitz for all her hard work. A little bit of fun there. No, she put in a lot of time and effort and showed a lot of skill and leadership at this. And it's greatly appreciated. So thank you for the time you served. You really helped the celebrations commission grow. Motion, please.
Bill, move to approve council proclamation 21-05 to Carolyn Bekovich for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission.
Kurkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item seven is also consideration of proclamation to James Flato for dedicated service to the celebrations commission in the city of Oak Creek. Catherine?
Council proclamation number 2106 to James Flato for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Whereas James Flato was appointed to the celebrations commission in April 2016 and served for five years. And whereas James Flato had resigned from the celebrations commission effective April 2021. And whereas James Flato helped to organize, set up, and participate in the yearly summer solstice, the Fourth of July celebration, the yearly Halloween trick-or-treat event, the giving tree events, and the yearly Christmas tree lighting celebration. And whereas James Flato has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to James Flato for his dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to James Flato, introduced and adopted this fourth day of May 2021.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone for James? I'll say a couple of words. James was a really great volunteer at celebrations. A lot of these events could not have taken place with him. He was one of the male leads there. And not only that, he is a city employee. So his time, effort on the days off to do these events were greatly appreciated. And a lot of these events couldn't take place without that city employee there. So thank you, James, for all your hard work on behalf of the council and the city. Motion.
Bill, move to approve council proclamation 21-06 to James Flato for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission.
Kurkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
And we also have a proclamation consideration for Patricia Hansen of the celebrations commission for her dedicated service at the city of Oak Creek.
Council proclamation 2107 to Patricia Hansen for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Whereas Patricia Hansen was appointed to the celebrations commission on July 2019 and served for one year and nine months. And whereas Patty Hansen resigned from the celebrations commission effective April 2021. And whereas Patty Hansen helped to organize and participate in the yearly summer solstice, the Fourth of July celebration, the yearly Halloween trick-or-treat event, the giving tree events, and the yearly Christmas tree lighting celebration. And whereas Patty Hansen has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Patty Hansen for her dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Patricia Hansen, introduced and adopted this fourth day of May 2021.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone for Patty?
Yep, go ahead, Chris.
Mayor, I know Patty well. And I know that she really enjoyed what she was doing at celebrations. So I, when you look at her timeframe though, she was there the least amount of time. But she really did enjoy her time on the commission. So I want to personally thank her for all she has done.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Patty and kind of personally Patty and her folks over at the Villas at Station, a senior living apartment complex here. They restarted the mayor's buggy bike and wagon judging contest. And those folks would diligently start the prizes, come out, do the judging, and the decorations and all that stuff. So I want to thank Patty for her time, her effort, and her dedication. So motion for Patty.
Bill, move to approve council proclamation 21-07 to Patricia Hansen for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the celebrations commission.
Kurkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And item nine is consideration of the proclamation for Christie Bush for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the tourism commission. Anybody for Chrissy?
Yeah, Danny, sorry. Thanks, Mayor. I had the pleasure of working with Christie as the tourism commission was formed a few years ago. Obviously, at the time of the day in the meeting hour requires a commitment. Given that she's a realtor and a busy woman, we appreciate the service and dedication to that. That commission, as it got off the ground and started to roll out significant efforts for the cities in terms of culture and entertainment. So we appreciate her service and wish her luck in her career and enjoy your time away. Thanks.
Before we move on, I forgot the clerk to read it into record. Christie deserves her proclamation read. Sorry about that, Christie.
Council proclamation number 2108 to Christie Bush for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the tourism commission. Whereas Christie Bush was appointed to the tourism commission in November 2016 and served for four years and five months. And whereas Christie Bush resigned from the tourism commission effective April 2021. And whereas Christie Bush has served the city in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to Christie Bush for her dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the tourism commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Christie Bush, introduced and adopted this fourth day of May 2021.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Before I say a few words on Christie. I would like to thank her also, can sum that up pretty well. But keep in mind, these are volunteer positions. These people are taking time out of their day. And these are daytime meetings at tourism. In speaking to her, her job position changed. And she would love to have stayed but couldn't. So we're going to miss her, but I do want to thank her for her time, talent, or input to help tourism get to where it is today. So thank you very much, Chrissy. Motion, please.
Bill, move to approve council proclamation 21-08 to Christie Bush for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the tourism commission.
Kurkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
And item 10 is informational and this is our COVID-19 update. And with us is Darcy tonight. Hi, Darcy, how are you?
Good evening, I'm good, thanks. I'm Darcy DeBois, health officer with the Oak Creek Health Department. Just have a short update tonight on our vaccination efforts. So as you've likely heard, we've transitioned to a period of time when we see a greater supply of vaccine than demand, which is the opposite of what we saw a couple of months ago. We are continuing to hold vaccine clinics here in the South Shore. But we're seeing a decrease in the number of people who are coming into the South Shore clinic in Cudahay. So we are implementing some additional strategies to try to make vaccine more accessible to a wider range of individuals. So we have reached out to many community partners, including businesses, churches, schools, and other community organizations. And we'll be partnering with them to host vaccine clinics in some of those locations. We were at Oak Creek High School last week to try to make it vaccine more accessible for 16 through 18-year-olds as well as their families. We are also doing home visits to provide vaccine to individuals who are homebound or who have a difficult time leaving their home. We do expect the FDA to approve administration of the Pfizer vaccine to the 12 to 15-year-old age group within the next couple of weeks. So we've started planning for how we can best make vaccine accessible to that group as well. I'm just going to share my screen here. We do continue to see fairly high rates of vaccination in Oak Creek as compared to other areas of the county and state. So this graph shows us the percentage of individuals 16 or older who've had at least one dose of COVID-19 vaccine. So you can see in Oak Creek, 61% of individuals here have had at least one dose compared to 41% across Milwaukee County and 44% in the state of Wisconsin. This graph shows the percent of individuals who've completed their vaccine series. So either one dose of Johnson &amp; Johnson or two doses of Pfizer or Moderna. You can see in Oak Creek, we've had 49% of our residents 16 or older who've completed their vaccine series, which compared to 33% across Milwaukee County and 35% across the state of Wisconsin. So we are certainly glad that our residents here are able to access vaccine, but we are continuing to reach more residents as we can. Any questions?
Darcy, any feel for the percentage of folks vaccinated who would be considered, you know, maybe post-60 or critical morbidity kind of situations?
I did take a look at the 65 and older, and we were pretty close to 90% of those individuals have been fully vaccinated at this point. It's hard to find data for other groups, you know, with certain health conditions or things like that, it's just less accessible.
Yeah, I mean, we have to assume those folks are taking care of themselves, so.
We hope so.
Yeah. Plenty of notice, that's for sure.
Darcy Alderman Kurkowski, first off, I've enjoyed my time that I've been there at the clinic volunteering. It's, I think it's time well spent. Have you thought about having some evening clinics? Maybe, I understand you had one and it was also on the outcome. But maybe do it on a more repetitive basis so that folks that work during the day and can't get there, can get there in the evening hours. And I don't know, I hate to suggest weekends. But and I appreciate you going to the school, at least Oak Creek. I assume you're going to reach out to the other schools in the area too. But what about some evening hours, like till like 9 o'clock or something?
Yeah, that's a good question. We did do, the last three weeks, we've had Tuesday clinic hours until 6:00 or shortly after. And, you know, seen varying degrees of appointments fill up. We also did do one weekend clinic a couple of weeks ago that was fairly popular. So we certainly are continuing to be open to those ideas, especially as we're working with some of these community organizations who can, you know, give us a good idea of when they might see a lot of traffic into their facility. So, you know, for workplaces, we might be doing early morning or evening clinics so that we can catch shift workers. We might be doing weekend clinics if we're in a church, for example. So we are open to doing clinics outside of our regular business hours as well.
Thank you.
And yeah, just to address your other point, we, there was a clinic at Cudahay High School last week as well, at St. Francis High School today. And we'll be at South Milwaukee High School next week, so.
Great. How has those turnouts been?
Pretty good. We did about 100 at Oak Creek High School. They did smaller numbers in Cudahay and St. Francis, but of course, those are smaller schools, so.
Thank you.
Darcy, yep, Alderman Dukenyak, third district. This is a non-COVID-related health question. Any feel, Darcy, for when the health department office may reopen? Specifically, I've had inquiries from a couple third district residents. They're kind of stuck right now. Bad choice of words, I guess. They don't know what to do with the insulin needles. And I know we have that program with the safe disposal of them. And they said they're having issues with just overflowing with those, you know, the safe boxes that the health department has provided. So I mean, if the department is not open, is there a means for those residents to somehow turn those needles in and get an empty, that reclamation box?
I mean, we actually did reopen last week, so.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We kind of did, no, that's okay. We kind of did a soft reopening just to see how it went. You know, we don't have as many staff in the office, but it's going well. And plan to do some kind of, you know, pushing of that on social media and the website soon. So we are able to take Sharps containers and we have started providing some of our other services as well. While we were closed, we weren't accepting the used containers, but we were still providing the new Sharps containers at the main city hall front desk. So hopefully everyone was still able to access those. But now they can bring in all of their used Sharps as well.
And Darcy, regular hours or the normal hours of operation?
Yep.
Okay.
Monday through Friday, 8 to 4, yep.
Okay, my apologies on that, thank you.
No problem.
Questions for Darcy? Greg, anything? Nothing? No, anything left to add before we cut you free, Darcy? Reminders? Nothing?
Those are all of my updates today.
Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Moving on, old business. Item 11 is informational on mayor mayoral appointments. These concern small claims and the library board. We do not need to vote on this, but we can discuss. So small claims would be Alderman Dukenyak returning there and Alderman Lorik returning to library board. Questions? Comments? Seeing none? Okay, we'll move on to 12. And this will require a motion. And these are to concur with the mayor oral appointments for aldermen to the tourism commission, which would be Alderman Gale and Community Development Authority. And we put two there, which is Alderman Kurkowski and Alderman Gale. Questions? Comments? Seeing none, motion?
Thank you, Mayor Gale. We'll move to concur with the following mayor appointments as listed.
Kurkowski, a second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Item 13 is also informational and it is on the common council president's aldermatic appointments. And for that, I will turn it over to President Gale.
Thank you, Mayor. No changes this year, but I'll read them off for the public's information purposes. Personal Finance Committee, and some of these have been reformulated so you'll know that the personnel on these committees has not changed, however. The Personal Finance Committee, Alderman Dukenyak, Alderman Tillman will be chair. Alderman Gale. License Committee, Alderman Kurkowski will be chair of that. Alderman Dukenyak, myself. Plan Commission, Alderman Lorik, Alderman Kuzakowski, the mayor obviously runs that. Board of Health, Alderman Kurkowski. Emergency Management, Alderman Kurkowski. Parks and Rec, Alderman Kuzakowski. Board of Public Works and Capital Assets, Alderman Tillman, myself, and Alderman Kuzakowski serves as chair.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Onto new business. Item 14, consideration of a resolution approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the city of Oak Creek and the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District for a collaborative community educational and recreational program. Andrew, you taking this one?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Before we dive into this, I know it's been a long time coming and probably no more felt in terms of the long time coming than the existing recreation staff. As you know, in July of 2020, our longtime recreation manager, Mary Jane Trey, retired. And, you know, we had this idea that we wanted to explore some alternative succession options for the recreation functions here. And I just want to give a heartfelt thank you to our staff who have hung in there with a lot of uncertainty and in a year of COVID, you know, bandaging things together, adapting, keeping patrons and coaches and leaders safe. So I want to thank Paula Navarez, who really has stepped up and served as our interim recreation manager. Amy Hildebrand, who mostly serves as our senior and adult program lead. Robin Studdman with sports. And clerical support from Kerry Hassel and Melinda Riekor. Again, not ideal. This was a lot of stopping and starting of discussion. And in the interim, these folks wondered what was next for them. So I can't thank them enough for hanging in there regardless of what happens this evening. So thank you to you all. So we've been, again, talking about this a while. In July of 2020, we came to, staff came before the council to talk about a thought primer document. And I want to focus a lot of my conversation on that thought primer because those were value judgments that both the school district and the city came up with and agreed to as a general premise for this concept before putting pen to paper and actually fleshing out the agreement. So really, the thought primer document is the skeleton. And we've just provided for the council this evening, the skin that goes over that skeleton. And that's the intergovernmental cooperation agreement. What this is not, you guys know I like to do this. What this is not, when we're talking about intergovernmental, a joint community education and recreation platform, the city of Oak Creek, there are several components to our parks, recreation, and culture in this community. And the city of Oak Creek will remain firmly in policy control, maintenance control, planning, implementing, changing, building upon, growing our parks and other recreation facilities that we have, whether those would be trails, parks, whether those would be trails, parks, and other amenities throughout the community. This process, this platform, has nothing to do with that. The city will still rent those facilities, maintain those facilities, collect revenue from those facilities. That is not part of the overall pie here that we're talking about this evening. What we are talking about is that physical recreation programming for all ages. And, you know, we talked about how the city and the school district have both been, I would say, competing for the same patrons in a lot of ways. There's been a lot of overlap, and premise number one was coming together to determine if we could serve the same taxpayer, we share the same taxpayer, we share the same participants. Could we serve them not only more efficiently, but most importantly, better moving forward? And we arrived at this, this discussion this evening. So in the, well, one more point before I move on. Our partnership that we're striking here is unique, but as was provided in your packet, and just for the public's benefit, every community in Milwaukee County and many other communities around the state, but every community in Milwaukee County with one exception, that's the City of Greenfield, actually has the local community school district serve as the lead agent for their recreation programming. And that doesn't mean they don't have parks. That doesn't mean they don't do parades. It doesn't mean they don't do other quality of life things, community events and gatherings, et cetera. But the actual recreation programming, the lead agent of that is the school district. Surprisingly also, I thought, with rare exception, by and large, none of those communities, those local villages and cities, provide levy support to the school district for administering and implementing those recreation programs. That is where we are a little bit unique, and I think that is important, and it was important to the council when we were talking about this. This did appear in our strategic action plan. We had in our 2017 to 2020 strategic action plan, we had general statements about looking for shared services and efficiencies in partnerships with the school district, and that was further detailed in our 2020 to 2022 strategic plan, where the council directed staff to finalize a succession plan for the Recreation Department and explore a joint community recreation platform with Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District. This is the culmination of those discussions and negotiations and plans. So if I could turn your attention to the Exhibit B, this is the thought primer document that kind of served as the premise or the basis for these discussions on the more detailed agreement. So again, as I mentioned earlier, number one, going into this, we thought that we could have our residents, our taxpayers, our participants, not only have a better experience, but also be more efficient with our tax dollars. We, city and school district in this joint platform, seek a collaborative and co-branded partnership with the school district to enhance our recreation programming. Your council decided and directed that we are not looking to just get out of the rec business and have the school district take it on and wish them luck. We wanted to remain a stakeholder in that. We wanted to remain with a voice in that, so we could help shape that moving forward. And we'll detail how we're going to do that, going to do that moving forward, but certainly a co-branded and collaborative, which isn't what those other communities have in Milwaukee County. The school district just takes it on. There has to be joint representation, kind of mentioned that, for determining program offerings and fees, and we will be doing that with the joint participation of the Recreation Parks and Forestry Commission. There'll be a school board representative on that, and they'll maintain one alderman on that, and that body will help advise the lead agent, the staff now at the school district, if this moves forward this evening, will help direct them, be a sounding board for that, those individuals. They will not be the absolute policy entity. That will remain with the school district as the lead agent. They will have ultimate policy decision-making authority over kind of the programming, but with input from the city side of it, input from the residents. The joint programming, number one, has to accommodate all ages. The way this thing has kind of morphed with the school district really gaining steam over the last several years with their youth programs, they focused a lot on the school age population, and we focused on preschool, some school age programming, and then adult and older adult, older active adult. This, I was told not to say this, but the cradle to grave.
Have a quotation.
Lifelong learning, I think, is how Heather Ryan at the school district would like to, lifelong learning in recreation, so from A to Z. The joint programming would resemble a balance of traditional recreation programming, but also with some education, social, and emotional well-being things. So the typical things that probably many of us were raised doing, playing T-ball and that physical stuff, well, that's growing, and that's, that's morphing a little bit more into a blend of social, emotional, and spiritual well-being as well. We would also need to make sure, from an equitable access standpoint, not only the all ages, but those in homeschool populations, homeschool population, as well as private school arrangements, should, as residents of the City of Oak Creek, be able to participate in these programming, program offerings as well, and their district, if you will, their constituency is the school district. So that small fraction of folks in the City of Franklin that are in the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District would also participate in these programs. We have, again, that recreation staff I just mentioned, where possible, we don't know the exact staffing plan moving forward. That will be fleshed out if this moves forward, and we'll be talking with those folks. But if at all possible, absorb those folks we currently employ into the recreation model, and if it doesn't quite fit into the record, the new recreation model, where can we find them? Another, another place of employment or another steady income with the school district? They have many jobs, and they've committed to prioritizing them in their hiring process as we head into the new school year. I think that's the biggest, the big, those are the big main points. Obviously, this gets into some of the agreement details now, but there's two components, as was discussed in the staff report. There's two main components of this. Obviously, the joint education and recreation programming itself and how that will function, and there's a cost contribution from the city's levy to the school district to support that. But also, we're tying in this longstanding memorandum of understanding that you all are probably very familiar with for the city's provision of DPW services at various school district sites. We've actually added a little bit into that at sites that we've never taken care of for them, and the cost, the cost contribution from the school district to the city accommodates that. So getting into more of the specifics, and then I'll turn it over for council discussion and Q and A. Again, I just mentioned the two, two kind of components of this. The city will contribute, beginning in 2022, $129,212 to the school district. That was arrived at by de-noting and calculating what the fixed costs are of the city's recreation programs that would be going over to the school district, and they'd be absorbing the acorn, the people, et cetera, cost for leasing, leasing space. That is their fixed cost, so there's no, no real wiggle room there. That's, that's what it is, and that's what they needed to get out of the agreement for their Board of Education's deliberation. And then additionally, the city would be reimbursed beginning in 2022, and I use 2022 because 2021, the rest of it is pro-rated. So just to give you a full picture, the city would receive $46,405, and then each of those figures would be increased 2% annually. That is the cost of the city's, it's a little bit difficult, because it's an average of the 26, 2016 to 2019, with an updated pay and equipment rate. So we didn't use 2020 because, you know, that was an anomaly. So those are our costs that we set a historical average. So we will be reimbursed for, you know, the majority, if not all, of the DPW maintenance. So with that, if you calculate that out and net it out, and I definitely do not want to make this conversation about what the city would be saving, because in the spirit of partnership, what we're really looking to do is provide the best recreation services, but this is still important. We're seeing in that levy reduction annually, a base, I call it a base annual levy reduction of approximately $84,100. So we'll have that moving forward for the city. And really, that's what we set out to do. We set out to save the money of not rehiring and, and restaffing our recreation manager position, and that's about what, with salary and benefits, what we were paying that individual before retirement. That said, I don't know that I have much more in terms of background for you on this. I trust the staff report is thorough and provides some answers to your questions ahead of time, but be happy to help out, answer any questions, or help facilitate conversation on this right now.
Questions for Andrew. Steve, start us off. I'll start it off. Andrew, we've had discussions over this before, and I, I feel, I enter into this, this agreement with a little bit of trepidation based on what happened the last time with the previous city administrator in giving some of the programs to the school district, and then them dropping programs that we used to offer as a city, primarily in the swim, some of the swimming programs. So that's, that's my concern, but it seems like most things have been covered, and hopefully, that won't happen. I know a lot of, perhaps those who don't have the benefit of reading the agreement might think, well, gee, we're trying to do this to save money, but we're, we're in fact spending money and giving over all this stuff to, to the school district. So I think you've, you've outlined it well to try and, at those that watch, and ease their fears. But with regards to the, in paragraph 5E, with regards to the employees that are going to get transferred over to the school district, and I feel some concern that if by chance, and we're only talking, but just a handful of employees, but I'm concerned that we send them over, tell me if I got this wrong, we send them over to the school district, they're going to be employees of the school district, but if the school district, if for some reason, they decide, well, we really don't need you, we're going to try and offer you a job somewhere in a school district, and it doesn't work out, are these folks just out of a job then? Or is there a possibility that we could see if something is open here in the city? I mean, they're, they're ending up at the school district, not by their choice, but then a year or two down the road, you know, say, well, I'm sorry, we don't need you, we're kind of overstaffed, so, I mean, sorry, you, you don't want to work in the kitchen, or you don't want to help clean the classrooms, you know, that's all that we have open right now. You know, sorry, Charlie, you're out of luck. I mean, did I have that wrong?
No, so certainly, that could happen, you know, any, any time, and any type of employment situation, that, you know, the employer may decide they're going in a different direction for whatever reason, efficiency or not. But I believe that the staffing plan that I'm suspect that we will help craft includes the majority of the five part-time staff that we're talking about, and if not, those folks will be given certainly an opportunity in the city, but also elsewhere in the school district. So I have no way to guarantee that they are going to like one of the several jobs that they might be able to choose from or be, apply for at the school district, but certainly, they have a lot of part-time positions over there, non-professional, non-teaching type positions, far more diverse, I would say, than, than what we have here at the city. But certainly, you know, we're going to do right by those employees. We have ways to do that here to provide them some transition time, et cetera, but they will have the opportunity with the city if there's something available or with the school district. But certainly, that employment may be found absolutely elsewhere if that just doesn't make sense for, for them as well.
Thank you.
Andrew Alderman Dukenac, Third District. Did we, the city, did we typically do the grass cutting at the school locations?
We did. We've had a longstanding MOU. I might have itemized the dates in here, but at least, I think, since 2009, we've had an MOU where the city provided certain DPW maintenance activities in exchange for the school district allowing the partnering with the city to utilize city, or excuse me, school facilities for our recreation programming. So that was really the trade-off, and you see where that goes away. We don't need their facilities for programming, so we need to be reimbursed for those, that DPW L A. Certainly, that's where.
I wasn't aware of that. I didn't know if that move was made because we were better equipped or not, but.
That too.
Okay. So obviously, there's cost effectiveness.
For them.
Probably to both of us for that too. Okay.
Exactly.
Can I, can I interject? Rich, for years, we, we cut the grass at Aben Shine for the school, for high school baseball program. So, I mean, it was just, we did it because, you know, we did it.
It's our park.
Yeah, but they used, they primarily used the ball field during the baseball season, but we took care of it, and we did it at no cost to them.
I'm just wondering, okay, Edgewood Elementary, there's no, there's no ball diamond at Edgewood Elementary, and we're cutting the grass for them, but it was kind of a, scratch my back, I'll scratch yours. We got something for providing that service. Okay.
And I should note, we did not include it in the agreement, but it's understood that specifically Aben Shine Park, because I know that's accessibility to other groups has been a, been a problem there. And I think the shift to spring baseball is self-regulating that a little bit, but they will be paying the city for setup and maintenance fees, just like any other group would. And they would for any rental that they, they perform that's for school sports-related activity, right? So if it's part of the recreation programming, say, your youth, you know, your, your young son or daughter is going to play T-ball or soccer, certainly, we want to partner with them and give them some outdoor space, just like we would if we were running our own programs. We wouldn't be charging them like a private group, but certain totally school athletic-related rentals would be just like any other outside group.
Thank you.
Man? Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Andrew, obviously, you know, we've been, Danny and I have seen a little more of this maybe than the other guys have, but we've all seen this on the docket since last year, as you said, and, you know, before that, it's been a priority. And even your prior administration, we had looked at an iteration of this, it's going on six, seven, eight years ago, potentially. So I just want to express the fact that I appreciate the diligence and working out the nuances of this relationship. I think overall, the, the sum of the two is going to be better than the individual pieces of the programs in terms of providing the community programs that are going to be useful and needed and, and desired. I think it's useful that we have some skin in the game in terms of, I think it's wallcraft, in terms of our, our control factors in here, oversight. So I do appreciate the diligence and this. Also, I want to extend my gratitude to the school board for being cooperative, Frank and his group administration with the superintendent, Heather, Andy, those folks at, at the school board and school district administration, just for cooperating and really looking at getting to something that's going to be, I think, a better asset to the city as a whole. So, well done, I think.
Chris?
Anything? No, nothing other than when I was brought, brought on board originally, when we were looking to do this collaboratively with the city and parks, not parks, I'm sorry, the city and the school district, we met with a group of people, and holistically, as you walk through and talk through the nuances of what we could possibly do here, this just makes so much more sense now, how it's going to be coming together. So I've been a big fan of this ever, ever since we were talking about it. And when I was first brought in as the alderman for the Parks and Rec Committee, I was fan number one, so I am so happy to see this. Hopefully, this moves forward. So, thank you.
Greg?
I have nothing more to add. Thanks.
Okay. But everything's been said, but Andrew summed it up. The services will probably, you know, will improve. For the general public, not much is going to change. It's still going to be out there in the acorn and the sign up. It'll be a little bit different procedure maybe here or there, but in the end, it's going to be pretty seamless, I believe. I think the public's going to enjoy it, and as Andrew said, the end effect is going to be better services to the taxpayers, regardless of who's doing it, so.
I could add, Mayor?
Yes.
So this is certainly, you know, we're best-laid plans, right? The best design, we're trying to think of everything. Well, we don't, just to be in all fairness. We don't think of everything when we do things like Creek Code. I know the term evolutionary was, was used for, you know, when we were talking about the Creek Code process. You know, this, the, the city's recreation programming in years one through, you know, whatever, weren't perfect. You had to work out the bugs. The school district, when they really got on their, you know, their, their platform, their youth, youth programs platform, that wasn't perfect from year one. So this is going to be a transition. It's going to be different. There are going to be things that we, as a city, may not like and want to have, you know, want to have done differently or looked at and examined. And we do have a venue for it to air some of those ideas and suggestions, because the idea is continuous improvement. But make no mistake, there's going to be some, you know, some, some growing pains along the way. This is new, but certainly not such a growing pain where there's significant issues or service issues in serving the residents. It'll be more on the back-of-house side where we're, we're working out things logistically and, and otherwise. So it won't be perfect, but, you know, we'll, we'll make this work as a continuous improvement process, and we have a great partner in, in doing so. I think they're really going to recognize, as Alderman Gill, you know, we're, we're a pretty significant stakeholder here. So we certainly want to have a, a seat at the table when we're fashioning these things and changing things moving forward. And I think the community survey, you read in the, the agreement within the first two years of the joint platform, we'll be going out and seeking some feedback from the residents and members of the school district. So that could be really helpful and instructive, too, to how we shape this moving forward, so.
All right. Thank you, Andrew. Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none? Motion on 14.
Sure. Guzakowski makes a motion that the Common Council approved Resolution Number 12243-050420, a resolution approving an intergovernmental cooperation agreement between the City of Oak Creek and the Oak Creek Franklin Joint School District for a collaborative community education and recreation program.
Focal second. Focal.
Alderman Tillman?
Aye.
Gill?
Aye.
Guzakowski?
Aye.
Kurkowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Dukenac?
Aye.
And item 15 is consideration of a motion to concur with the mayor appointments to Celebrations Commission. We have two members that want to volunteer their time, James Kraining and Christine Magard.
Magard. Any questions, comments? Seeing none, motion?
It will move to concur with the mayor's appointments as listed.
Guzikowski will second.
Focal.
Alderman, Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duknia.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye. Item 16 is the treasurer's report, ending March 31st, 2021. And with us is Barb tonight. Hi, Barb.
Hi, good evening. So treasurer report on investment and banking for accounts month ending March 31st, 2021. Our beginning balance was $56,091,998. Our ending balance, $57,087,176. Interest earned for the month was $29,190. And our increase from beginning to end balance was $995,178. A major activity for the month, and I apologize, I noticed I put February tax collection in here, it should be March, it was $5,251,230. And we had debt service payments go out of $3,909,768.
Hey, thank you, Barb. Any questions for Barb concerning any of the report? Okay, seen none. Barb, I want to thank you for the time tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 17 is consideration of a motion to authorize the publication and write off of 2019 delinquent property taxes as per listed in your report. So with that discussion, anyone? Andrew or Max, you want to give us a brief? What's that? Oh.
That would be me.
I'm sorry, Barb. If you would, you know what, because we get asked every year, just give us an explanation of, of what we're doing and why we're doing it.
You bet. Okay, so this would be publication and write off of the 2019 delinquent personal property tax. It's kind of a twofold reason for doing it. It's per our policy for the handling of delinquent personal property tax. One of the reasons we do that is to provide another notification to the businesses that have tax obligations still outstanding for the city. And it is also to write off, out of the, off the city's books for the, to provide a more accurate position of the current receivables for the financial statements, excuse me. So what we do is we, there's a balance in our receivable account for, it's the city portion that remains outstanding. We've already, I, I, let me back up here a little bit. So I've provided a list attached to, to the council report. It's a spreadsheet that shows all the accounts and what the dollar amounts are. And then also attached is a copy of our software program, all of the accounts with, again, the dollar amounts. So what you'll see is the city portion, that's the principal only amount. And that would be after the amounts that we have charged back to the other taxing jurisdictions. Those amounts are smaller because of some law changes that happened a number of years ago. We can only charge back in certain cases for, for accounts that are bankrupt or out of business, we can write those back, but the remainder of it stays with the city. So you'll see at the bottom of the worksheet, the amount that will be written off is $8,417.06. And then what we do is we'll publish all of the amounts, including interest and penalties, the balances that are due through the end of May. And what we do is, well, the total amount of that is $15,784.31. But there's two accounts that are under $10. And given the cost of publication, we wouldn't be publishing those amounts. So the total for publication would be $15,772.18. And just to be clear, this doesn't mean we won't continue our collection ever, efforts. We've already turned these over to a collection agency. So we will continue to pursue collection on those.
Hey, questions for Barb? Steve?
Barbara Alderman-Kirkowski. How does JP Morgan Chase Bank end up on this list? Can't you just like walk into the lobby and say, give us some money? I mean, I say it kind of facetiously, but really, a bank?
You know, we do, honestly, we do everything that we can. We send them notifications. There's only so much legally that we can do. You know, again, they've been turned over to a collection agency. So, no, I, I can't really go and knock on their door.
Occupancy permit, I mean.
Paying us? I don't have any.
Nothing? Okay. Seeing nothing more, motion please.
It will move to authorize the publication and write off of the 2019 delinquent personal property taxes listed.
Guzikowski will second.
Focal.
Alderman-Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duknia.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
That gets us to community development, item 18. We did not, the notices for a public hearing were not mailed out, so we really can't do this item yet. So we will need a motion to hold ordinance 3005 to the meeting of 6/1/21 after the required public hearing is held. So, one of you gentlemen would make that motion to hold. Appreciate it.
You can do that.
Okay.
Guzikowski will make a motion to hold ordinance 3005 until 6/1/21?
Perfect. Until the required public hearing is held.
Yes, as noted.
Tillman will second.
Focal.
Alderman-Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duknia.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duknia.
Aye.
And item 20 is a vendor summary report, ending April 28th, 2021. If you'd all take a look and direct your questions appropriately to the party that can answer. We'll look for motion.
It will move to approve the April 28th, 2021 vendor summary report in the amount of $468,809.48.
Guzikowski will second.
Focal.
Alderman-Dukniak.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
And item 21 is consideration of a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes 19.85 to discuss the following, A, 19.85, sub 1, sub E, to discuss proposed terms for a financing development agreement for the portion of the property located at 9300 South Fifth Avenue, 4001 East Lake Vista Boulevard, and 4200 East Lake Vista Boulevard. And item B, section 19.85, sub 1, sub E, to consider a real estate purchase and sale agreement between Kenneth L. Ellis and the city of Oak Creek for the property at 7700 South IKEA Way. President Gale.
Thank you, Mayor. Gale moves to convene in the closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statutes, section 19.85, to discuss the following, A, section 19.85, sub 1, sub E, to discuss proposed terms of the finance development agreement for a portion of the property located on 9300 South Fifth Avenue, 4001 East Lake Vista Boulevard, and 4200 East Lake Vista Boulevard. B, section 19.85, sub 1, sub E, to consider a real estate purchase and sale agreement between Kenneth L. Ellis and the city of Oak Creek for the property at 7700 South IKEA Way.
Guzikowski will second.
Focal.
Alderman-Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duknia.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Item 23 is consideration of a resolution approving a real estate purchase between Kenneth L. Ellis and the city of Oak Creek.
Burke moves to approve resolution number 12242-050421, approving the real estate purchase agreement between Kenneth L. Ellis and the city of Oak Creek. Guzikowski will second.
Focal.
Alderman-Guzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Duknia.
Aye.
Tillman.
Aye.
Gale.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Excellent. Good night, everybody. Have a great week.